I'm going to call the public hearing meeting to order. So, public hearing for the bylaws for the town of Granby. The planning board of the town of Granby pursuant to Massachusetts general law, Chapter forty dash A, Section five, and Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one Q. The bylaws of the town of Granby will hold a public hearing on April twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, at six P.M. at ten B West State Street to present and discuss proposed amendments to the bylaws of the town of Granby, Volume three, Chapter twenty-one, zoning bylaws, the town of Granby subdivision regulations and fee schedule.
Okay.
That one shows the overlay districts in it?
Yes.
Okay. Sounds a little bit easier to read than that.
I like that one better.
And they have one that doesn't show the overlay districts. We can put those on.
We have to go through this whole thing, Jim? Are we doing reading it all?
You don't have to read it all.
The basic implication will show the overlay, but this is easier to read.
What time does the public get to have questions, comments?
Yeah, we do as we go.
Okay.
Per article.
All right. So, we'll start off with the zoning bylaw changes. Section two, zoning districts, Section two point zero, types of districts will be deleting industrial district limited to landfill solid waste management and recycling use and inserting limited industrial district. Section three, use regulations, Section three point zero, schedule use regulations, Section three point one, prohibited use, and Table one, schedule use regulations. Deleting Section three point zero, three point one, and Table one, and replacing them with Section three point zero, three point one, Table one.
Do you want to explain?
Yeah. Just kind of take those two and explain them a little bit.
Okay. Go for it. Section two, are we going to say there's going to change?
Okay, Section two, since this was posted, the board has decided to leave that alone until we do some further investigative work on that lot. Basically, it's the old, well, it's the existing landfill. And rather than make that just industrial, we're going to keep it the way it is until we get some more information on why it, exactly why it was purposed that way as I too, before we turn it over to any other public use. So, that's going to come out entirely.
Okay. It's Section three.
So, this is working. It's confusing here.
So, we're taking out three point oh and three point one, which is on that first page, and replacing it entirely. And then the table we're replacing entirely. That's all about the second one does.
So, if you ever see Section three, it's use regulations. It actually page three in the handout. It's going to have a part that says current on it.
And the table.
Yep. So, you have that, and it's just one, two, three, four, five pages of the table, which is under the current bylaws. And then you'll see after that, Section three, use regulations, which is actually the proposed changes to it. Any changes are highlighted, highlighted in the bold print, darker print, which from what is now current. Do we go through all these?
No.
It's just the current.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if people want to take a minute or two, if you're following along, as I said, you go from the current, Section three, use regulations, and you go to the proposed changes. And again, you'll see in the chart as well, anything that's in bold print is what has been changed, or is what is proposed to be changed from the current chart.
And this explains a little better than before the chart. Your husband, this tells you a little better.
Right.
What each thing means.
Right, so again, the first part that we see was proposed. It illustrates what each letters mean for each particular area. It might be a little difficult to follow along, just because there's a lot of different changes that were made. But a lot of it was just to the chart to kind of update as far as what is needed and where certain things are allowed. Anyone have any questions, comments regards to it? And like I said, it's...
Suppose that maybe you lay in line with your pages, but it's just the section three you have here, so that you can put the line instead of having number on any of these. Or if you can put the pages with each bylaw and do each section separately, so we can follow through a little bit easier?
There was a, I don't actually know why that they weren't numbered. I guess because there were changes were made.
They're not numbered in this package, because that's not the same page numbers they're going to be using, but I understand what you're saying.
Right.
In this particular packet.
That you're giving us the...
Yes.
Or even do each section, each one separately, where...
Instead of one big...
There might be several things.
It refers to single-family dwelling estate lots subsection five point four zero and five point four one. We'll be deleting Sections five point four zero and five point four one, and inserting the new subdivisions as follows. Five point four zero, single-family dwelling and estate lots shall be permitted in the following, the R.S., R.M., W.S.P., A.P. districts. They are subject to dimensional density regulations as stipulated in Sections three, Table two, and Table of dimensionals density regulations in accordance with additional requirements specified below.
And that's changing under five point... Yeah, that's your next one.
Five point four one, no more than two estate lots may be adjacent to each other at the street line without planning board site plan approval. Additional estate lots up to a total of five consecutive estate lots require planning board site plan approval. So, that's, Jim, do you want to speak about that? That change how it affects people?
Well, it's going to affect in two areas, mostly with the business, the business sector. So, in the business areas, we're going to be able to put, where you've got frontage, maybe only a hundred feet of frontage, but you've got eighty thousand plus square feet in the back. You're going to be able to put a business in the back as long as it doesn't go beyond the five hundred feet.
That's the change, taking out W.S.P. and A.P.
District. So, in other words, if you get on South Hadley and you look at pages, automotive, and some of those, I think there's like three businesses that sit way in the back, where the way that our bylaws currently wouldn't allow that. They'd each have, they would each have to have a hundred and fifty feet of frontage in order to do that. So, what this is doing is allowing us to bring more business in, maybe put that type of a business, like an automotive business or something like that, to sit towards the back of the lots. There's a quite, there's a few areas here in town that that would allow itself to, street lumber, the old street lumber there, they've got frontage, not a lot of frontage, because there's some wetlands and some ponds there, but there's property in the back that could be developed as business. The other side of Finn's Hill, there's quite a few areas in the business district from South Hadley to...
So, you'd be able to do this without putting in a road?
Correct.
Just like a long driveway?
Along, exactly.
Pages on County Drive.
Correct.
That's a road.
That's a road, but you'd be able to do this with a private driveway, with site plan approval. So, the board may allow one driveway, as long as they both, as long as each of those lots have their own access, they would allow one road in to service multiple businesses in the back.
Because there are different areas throughout Granby where there's a lot of land in the back of certain properties, but they just don't have the frontage on the street that'll actually help those individuals. So, also the proposed amendment to delete overlays noted in five point four zero and add V.C., which is Village Center. That's one of the handouts that were given, separate from the packet.
Yeah, it wasn't up there.
Wasn't up there?
No, it's not a part of the handout.
Okay.
We're proposing an amendment to what was in the handout.
Oh, okay.
Same thing with the business one.
All right. The disno proposed amendment to number one to include all estate lots required by S.P.A.
No, you're ahead of yourself. That's business. Now, we're going to do the business.
Okay.
This is the single one we just finished?
Right.
Okay. Now, you go to the next one.
So, it's the five, yeah, it's the same thing, same thing.
But it's your first, you're introducing it as a brand-new bylaw.
All right. So, as Jim spoke to, five point one three, business state lots, adding a new section as follows. Business state lots shall be permitted in general business mixed use in industrial districts. They are subject to dimensional and density regulations as stipulated in Section three, Table two, Table, I'll get that word right sooner, dimensional extending regulations in accordance with additional requirements specified below. So, there's a proposed amendment to number one, which will include all estate lots require S.P.A.
Just site plan approval.
Yeah, site plan approval. The change that is being looked to be made is business estate lots may be adjacent to each other at the street line with up to a total of five consecutive estate lots, all requiring site plan approval by the planning board. So, but basically what Jim just referenced before, as far as residential and business alike.
So, in other words, on the residential side, there was only two estate lots allowed consecutively. Now, we're opening it up to five with site plan approval. And prior to that, there wasn't any business estate lots, and we're creating that now with site plan approval.
Well, you don't even need to go through this. Go to that one.
All right. So, we're done with this?
Yeah, and the next one is just adding...
Okay.
Business state lots into the table.
All right, so add bylaw, Section five point nine, nine point three, large-scale ground-mounted solar energy system moratorium will be added. Revised bylaw, six point two, special permits, six point two one, special permit granting authorities, looking to delete Sections six point two one, special permit granting authorities, and inserting a definition of special permit granting authorities shall be in accordance with Table one, scheduled to use regulations. So, a lot of the stuff that we're actually talking about here, we'll be going through, were just some changes that we're making so that the table and the actual bylaws matched up. And there were also some areas that, as we read through the different bylaws, some things might have been left out, and we're making the changes, so.
So, these things that you're mentioning may not be on it, or they definitely will be?
Everything that we're doing here is just a proposed changes to the bylaws. It'll go to the town meeting.
And then people vote?
And then people will vote on it.
Okay, so all this stuff will be there for us to vote on?
Yes, yeah. Subdivision rules, regulations, and fee schedule, again, seven point zero one, roadway design, subsection eight sidewalks, add a new subsection to read construction of sidewalks to be in compliance with ADA requirements. So, our bylaw before didn't have ADA listed there, so that's a change that was made to include ADA requirements. Fee schedule, clarify the fee schedule for special permit with site plan approval and other reviews by separating out small, medium, large projects along with the fee for each one. And we'll be adding in consultant fees as well for projects.
It's a zoning map he's got up with the...
Yeah.
Do you want to take a minute to the moratorium?
What's that? We can, yeah, sure. Is there any questions as we're going along here, please?
So, if I understand this correctly, the only difference in the solar one is the first line where you have a Y, which means used granted. And now it's S.P., S.P. eight two D.
First the number?
Yeah, I'll show you looking at.
Section six two or six three about July?
Three point five point two oh. It's life scale ground mounted, is that the one you're referring to? Three point five point two oh?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Right, so the changes are in bold. So, special permit, site plan approval, planning board. That's in residential. It's also added to general business and industrial.
No, not general business.
No, I'm sorry, no, industrial one and industrial two.
But the solar moratorium is not, is something different.
Right.
It's not, we're not talking about that.
So, the changes are the ones that are involved, are you sure?
Yes.
Yes.
The moratorium is just a flat moratorium. We've been requested by the select board. We're bound by bylaws to hold the hearing and present it to the town for a two-thirds vote to either approve or disapprove the moratorium. If the town votes to put a moratorium in place, then the planning board will look at what changes may or may not be introduced within that moratorium, and proposed changes, and then bring that back to town meeting for a vote.
Who proposes the changes?
It'd be the same thing that we're doing now, it'll be...
Public hearing.
Public hearings with the public and take recommendations for, you know, suggestions and things like that.
So, that's going to be on the next planning board? I mean, are new town leaders, that will be on there?
Yes.
Yes.
No scratching at the beginning of it?
No.
Promise?
Promise.
You want to record?
That's fine. So, we have Section two, zoning districts. I can just go over for purposes by law, the town of Granby hereby divided into the following types of use districts.
We already did that one.
You did?
Yeah, we're all done.
Oh. Is that everything? Well, I just think we'll over it all.
I know, it's hard to believe it, you just whooshed right through. The fee schedule was the last thing.
So, there's a lot of information here, as I said, you know, and not to, but a lot of it was just clerical changes to a lot of the different, like I said, the charts and things like that. And like I said, some of the wording and some of the bylaws, things were left out and had to be changed. But these are, will be here just for people who wish to come down to Town Hall and pick up a copy if you wish to do so, because I know, kind of watching this at home, you're probably saying, well, then talk about much. But all the information is presented and sent this handout, and so they'll be here if you wish to come down and pick up one.
The bylaws are online already?
Yes.
And the moratorium and all of that is online, so we can...
All of those changes?
No, that's just means the whole, all the bylaws.
The current bylaws are under the planning board.
Right.
But the moratorium would not be on?
Would not be there?
No.
It's not a bylaw.
It's not a bylaw. The moratorium is being proposed.
Okay, so where do you see that before we get to the meeting?
You won't.
You don't?
Well, you have it in the handout.
Right.
It's in the handout?
It's in there?
Yeah.
So, it's just this proposed that's...
Right.
Everything...
To see if the town wants to enter into a moratorium.
Right. Everything we presented, right.
I thought we already had some, something out there.
No.
What we have out there currently is bylaws, accepted bylaws or voted on bylaws for solar arrays that the contractors or applicant has to follow currently.
Okay, which follows the state guidelines or...
Yes, I believe they followed what PVPC had on, that was the state, what they had sort of suggested.
Right, at the time, it's, I mean, we can't speak with the planning board back then, put forward, but it's something that went forward to town, the town voted on it, so whether they added or subtracted from, I don't know.
If we want to make changes in the bylaws, we have to vote for the moratorium, then come to a public hearing and introduce, introduce changes that we would like.
Right.
Correct.
And then that, those changes will go to town meeting to be voted on.
Right. The only way that the bylaws can be changed is at town meeting.
Is it always a two-thirds vote?
Twenty bylaws, yes.
This wording is going to be consistent with this?
Right, whatever you see here is what's going to be presented.
Okay.
And again, these are all just proposed, so. Is there any other questions, concerns, input?
A lot of this, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Is the moratorium going to be long enough, do you think, to adequately address and change bylaws if you're proposing until September thirtieth? Is that enough time?
If I'm not mistaken, there was a, what, a sixty day bill? I'm sorry, a six month?
Six month.
You couldn't go longer than six month by state law on a moratorium, is that correct?
They don't recommend it.
So, is there, once we decide some changes to bylaws, it has to be approved by the state?
Yes, the attorney general's office is going to approve it, AG's office.
Okay.
Is that the last step?
Yes. So, whatever we, whatever changes that are approved at town meeting, that's sent off to AG's office, they review it to make sure that everything is correct.
And they might make changes.
They can make, right, they can make recommendations, send it back and say, if you'd like to do this, this, and this, but, so.
Is it six months after town meeting? From Dr. Brad.
So, if the attorney general hasn't replied by September thirtieth, the moratorium's allowed? Is it...
No.
I think the attorney general would then extend it.
Right, so the moratorium would take place as soon as the town votes on it, and what happens, and things could take place, things, but if the attorney general comes back and says, well, no, you can't do that, then it puts us in a, we'd have to go back and look at what we did. But that's why you want to, we do all this, it goes for our town council as well, before sent off the attorney general, to make sure that everything is correct, because we absolutely don't want something to be kicked back from the attorney general.
And I believe the attorney general has a specific amount of time. They have ninety days to respond to it. And I've seen cases where the attorney general has extended the moratoriums or whatever, because they haven't had a chance to give us...
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Right.
And see, what she's, well, I think she's thinking, is, I don't like to think further, but is, once the moratorium goes into effect, you have your public hearings, there's recommendations that are made, and then you have to schedule a town meeting. If that goes beyond the moratorium, can...
Does that open up the clock?
Does that open up, anybody to do...
You can ask the attorney general for...
What was, go back to the original proposal, what is not?
This article says that it would expire on September thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. So, if the town has not adopted any changes by that date, it would revert back to what exists currently.
Adapted to any changes and have them approved.
Right, so if the planning board wanted to change the solar bylaw, they would have to do so before this expires.
So, say you make the bylaw change, you have to go back and vote it, and then you send it to the state?
Correct.
Yes.
So, if we make the changes and we voted on it, and it goes to state, and it's past September thirtieth, it doesn't revert back, because it's with the state?
Yes, correct.
So, as long as we vote on it before September thirtieth, we're all set?
That's correct.
The only way we'd have a problem with it, if the attorney general came back and said, what you did, you can't... The only way we'd have a problem with it, if the attorney general came back and said, what you did, you can't do that, so.
And so then we meet again and fix what he wants us fixed and go back and vote on it again?
Yeah, start the whole thing all over again.
Right, so, so our goal is, if the moratorium is passed at town meeting, then we'd start the process and we'd, you know, our goal is to meet the deadline, as far as September 30th, so.
We'll meet the deadline regarding the planning board's business as well as the ninety day accepted date by the attorney general. We have to have all this work done ninety days before that September 30th date, is that correct?
No.
No?
The ninety days for the attorney general to review is after the town?
Is after, okay, it's different than the other one we did, okay. The marijuana bylaws.
Typically, what we've done in the past for substantial changes, we would probably, and I'm not going to speak for the whole board, but we probably, for every change that was proposed for the solar, we would probably make separate articles and vote on each of them separately. So that if one, so that if someone doesn't like one particular piece in the whole package, the whole package doesn't fail.
Right.
You can vote on, you know, as we break it out, as we, as we see fit to present it to the town.
As a board or within the town?
As a board to the town. And most of that information will come from the hearings that we have prior to.
Any other questions?
The vote is 13th of May?
May, May 13th, yes.
All right.
Yeah.
Are we good?
Need a motion to close.
A motion to close the meeting?
Are we closing it or continuing? Closing.
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 So make a motion to close the public hearing regarding the bylaws?
Sir, second?
Second.
Zoning bylaw changes and and, um, no, that's, and subdivision rules and regulations and fee schedule. Okay, so your motion must oppose a public hearing regarding zoning, regarding zoning bylaw changes and subdivision rules and regulations and fee schedule. Jim, second?
Jim, second.
Okay.
Is there any discussion? What?
Is the election the same date as the town meeting?
No.
No.
What is the election?
It's after that, it's May 21st of?
Oh, like a week later?
Yeah, it's actually after the town meeting. I think it's the 21st maybe? It's on a Monday, I'm not sure of the actual date. Was there any discussion?
Just procedurally, so two things, you can adapt the subdivision regulations right now if you want to. And secondly, you need to make recommendations at the town meeting on the zoning areas. So you can talk about it tonight if you want to make your recommendations, or you can do it at the next meeting, which would be next week. But I think you should decide what you want to recommend or not recommend at town meeting.
Okay.
Is that, well?
Um, well, okay, so are you, we're done with the motion to close the public hearing?
No, so there's a motion by, by second by Jim. We haven't got past that point yet.
Okay.
Is there any other further discussion?
Yes. Before we close the hearing, do we want to vote on whether or not we're, the two things, the recommendations and the moratorium?
You can close the hearing and then consider it.
Okay, all right, so we, so no further discussion.
All favor?
Aye. Now, we're doing, what should we be doing first?
Well, we should call the, you need to order that.
Well, you still have it.
It's still in order. It's still over here. We're still in order. Okay.
So to, to Bill's point, we'll start with the moratorium. Is the board in favor of supporting the moratorium?
I am.
I am not.
Well, let's, so I guess some of the main reasons that we, the feedback we've gotten from the select board has been concern about clear cutting and wanting to develop a utility, is that, is that correct? To manage?
A municipal electric utility company?
Correct.
Something they're looking, they're looking into, yes.
Well, I'll, I'll speak to the, to the the concern of clear cutting. To form a, a moratorium from that aspect, I don't agree with it, because we're singling out one industry. You can, you can clear cut for a variety of other reasons. Farming, you can clear cut to grow crops. You can clear cut to mine gravel or, or loam or earth, I think they call it an earth removal permit. And subdivisions. And, and as, to date, we've only had one before us that had any substantial clear cutting.
Solar projects.
For a solar project. And singling them out, I, I don't feel comfortable doing that. When, when they could do it for other purposes, for other reasons. And so that, that's kind, that's my argument for, for having the moratorium for that, for that purpose.
Just that one purpose?
Well, that plus the bit about forming a municipal utility.
I don't think that's really part of the solar moratorium. I don't think that's the intention of it. That's just my interpretation, it's not the intention. I'm, there are other ways that we can tidy up where the solar projects can go and how many we can have. There's things like that that we can do to our current bylaws, and it's not necessarily just clear cutting.
Well, that's what, that's what we've heard from the select board. That was one of their main concerns.
But that's not what I'm hearing from, you know, other people, town people.
But the intent behind the letter from the select board to the planning board to requesting a bylaw change was primarily about the clear cutting and the?
I, I can't speak to that. My impression was they wanted to give us time. All these solar projects are coming in and they want us to take time to look through our bylaws that were put in, the solar bylaws that were put in, in 2014, when they didn't expect but just a few solar projects, and now they're one on top of the other. Do you want the town to change to be solar city?
So I guess where I'm coming from, and, you know, my, my personal opinion is one thing. And just like everybody in the town has their personal opinion. And I do think we're at a point now where there could be some changes that maybe be, may need to be made to our bylaws in reference to solar panels, solar farms and things like that. It might be a time to look at it, because obviously when these were adopted five, six, seven years ago, all that, right? I mean, things are different now than they were, they were then. And also a lot of that had to do with the green energy at the time when this came about. But again, I, I, I like to see and get input from, if we're going to look at that as far as a moratorium and I don't know if a moratorium needs to be in place for us to start getting input to change the bylaw. Would it help? It would definitely help.
It will help who? It's not going to help the people that are before us already that have already invested in these projects.
No, but I mean?
And we certainly don't want to open the town up to more legal action.
We wouldn't be. It's giving us time to tighten them up.
So, and that's?
To think about it and not, I mean, we, there's some places, and I don't, can't give an example right now, that?
So I go, I, I just, I just go back as far as my, my personal opinion and, and again, I, I don't see a huge problem with solar panels. Do I think our bylaws could use some adjusting at this point? I, I think it's worth something to take a look at. But also, you know, presenting this to the town, I think is what our purpose is, and let the town make a decision as whether or not they want to adopt a moratorium.
I get that, but the point of the discussion right now is, is the board as a, as a whole going to support it? And and, and to think that these solar farms can go anywhere in town is, is, is not a true statement.
Right.
It cannot go in a business zone. It cannot go up and down 202. They can go into areas which, which most of the town is, is field and pasture land. Where farmers are taking advantage of the, the
Field and pasture is different from cutting down acres of trees.
But again, we're singling out an industry because you can do it for multiple other purposes. And that's where I don't agree with saying, you can't put solar there, but tomorrow you can, you can, you can't put solar there because we don't want you to clear cut it, but tomorrow they can do it for, for three or four other different reasons. So it's not, to me, it's not a right, it's, it's not the right thing to do. The town will decide whether or not they want to do it.
Right, and?
And I just, I don't feel comfortable supporting that article. If you, if, if we want to, again, once we get through all this, I've always said that these bylaws, that is a, it's a living, breathing document. We should be looking at it all the time on a regular basis to, to understand what we should be tweaking as we go along. The town voted, voted to put this in five or six years ago with a two-thirds vote to allow it.
Right.
So for us to say, we're, we're going to supersede what the town wanted, let, let them vote for it, but I don't feel comfortable supporting it. We've got, we've scrutinized and looked at a few solar projects already. We've tweaked them. We've, we've listened to the abutters. We've, we've put conditions on on these, on these solar fields to accommodate the abutters with screening, with the hours of operation when they're, when they're constructing these fields. I mean, we, I think we stay pretty open-minded. We're, it has to go through conservation, another scrutiny there, we're making sure that it's not affecting the environment. That's, you know, that's, that's my feeling on the, on the issue.
And as well, if it was a subdivision or anything else, the applicant would be going through those same rules, you know, not just singling out solar, but hours of construction and that kind of stuff.
And this board already has the authority, it's through site plan or special permit to, to tweak all that. And to think we're going to come up with a set of bylaws that's going to cover everything, it's not.
I don't know if that's the thought behind this. And it's not just, just clear cutting. We need to look at all of the laws we have on that, what doesn't fit nowadays with all the big interest for solar projects, and the town is not getting any money out of this. Out of any of these, the town is not getting any money out of any of these projects.
That's not, that's
After they're built.
I beg, I beg to differ, because some of these projects are coming out of, was it 61A?
61A.
61A, which now puts them back on the tax base.
With five years back taxes?
With five years back taxes, correct.
Right.
So now we're getting land tax out of something that we weren't getting anything.
But the big selling point in the beginning with solar was, oh, the town's going to have a pilot agreement, and they can count on all this money, a set amount of money, every year for the length of the lease, which is taxes.
Well, the main push for this, I was on the board back then, the main push to put, to introduce solar was to meet the green community minimum requirements to receive grant money.
Right. But it's not, you don't have to have unlimited solar to stay in the green community.
It's hard to pick and choose. This board shouldn't be picking and choosing who can do what with their property.
So I guess what I'm looking at as far as this board is not to get bogged down on it, because ultimately it's being presented to the town people. The town people will vote whether they want a moratorium in place or they don't, and if they do, I think it's at that time we, as a planning board, we start looking at it and see if there's changes that need to be made and hold our hearings as such.
And I agree with, with your thought, because even though I'm, I'm against a moratorium, however, if the, if the town people give us our marching orders
Right.
at the town meeting, then we by right have to follow that charge.
I, I, I just, so just sitting at this, sitting on this board, my personal opinion is what I feel is my personal opinion. I know, and then when it comes time to vote, as a town member, I will vote as a town member. And whatever that outcome will be, whether a moratorium goes in place, or a moratorium does go into place, it gives us what we're supposed to do as far as that. And I, and I said, it's, you know, and I made it clear before, it's, you know, just my personal opinion, you know, we talked before, you know, someone like myself who has almost four acres of land, and, you know, 20 years ago, when I, when I built my house, there was fields and fields and fields. It was actually farmland. Now there's trees everywhere. And I cannot, I can't even see, you know, up on top of Colville anymore. So to say I couldn't go in there and cut down those trees now, how's that fair to me? You know, to, to do something, so I see, you know, people's sides.
Jim is looking for a general consensus of the board members.
Well, Bill brought it up too. Are we going to go into a town meeting as a divided front, or are we going to go into a stating our opinion, whether we should be, when we're presenting these, we should be making recommendations as a board, whether we, whether we
Agree.
Are in favor of, in favor of it. Don't, is that, is that?
I think you're right.
Jim? So we're going one by one to see who?
Well, I want to, I haven't heard from Rob.
No, I'm in favor of the moratorium. It's just temporary, you know, we can, we can tweak things, we can let the townspeople come back with suggestions and you know, we're not the final say, I don't think, unless, I think we should get the town involved. That's what the whole process is.
And you are indeed correct. We are not the final say. That's why this is going to town.
Right, and I don't, right, I don't see any harm in that. Just letting the townspeople have their say and it's either going to be temporary and we have our marching orders or gets voted down and everything stays the same, you know.
Then, then if we wanted to, we could still look at the solar bylaw at a later date, if we wanted to.
Absolutely. It is temporary, it's not permanent, and it's not a year, two-year moratorium, it's a correct?
And Jim, you're, no?
Well, it's a September 30th.
I'm not in favor, I'm not in favor of supporting the moratorium. I think we can make those changes as we move forward without harming the applicants that have already, because every applicant that's been before us that has not been permitted will be subject to any of the new bylaws. So you've got, you've got the applicant that was before us tonight, all the money they've spent that we've, we've let them along with. Any, moratorium goes in place, they can't do anything for at least six months, and then any of the changes, they got to go back and redesign.
So Jim, those would be good questions for our town council, because I know, I remember seeing an article So, Jim, those'd be good questions for our town council, because I know, um, I remember seeing an article, I don't want to misspeak, but it was either Palmer or Munson that put a moratorium in place. And they referred to applications that have been processed, that they would not be affected by the moratorium. So not that the permit's been issued, but the applications, but the application was already in place.
So your grandfather? Well, there are a couple ways you can get protection from the moratorium. One is if you have a building permit or a special permit. That protects you. The other is to submit a subdivision plan, either an A and R plan or a definitive, or a preliminary plan before the town meeting. And if you do that, you can gain protection from the zoning change. So if a landowner wanted to subdivide the property, they can submit that to the planning board before town meeting.
So I, and I can't, I can't remember if it was Palmer or Munson. And I, I remember reading that it stood out to me that it spoke to applications being, or accepted. So what, how's that different?
Well, just submitting an application before the town meeting doesn't protect you. You have to do, have either a building permit or a special permit already in hand, or have one of those two types of plans submitted. So what often happens is when you have a moratorium like this, planning boards are going to flood the plans coming in from landowners who want to protect themselves from that zoning change. You haven't really seen that happen so far, which means there's probably not a lot of, you know, plans being prepared at the moment.
Enough, close enough to plans being, for them to come-
You know, and, and I, I see, uh, I see Jim's view completely. Um, because if I was on the other side and I was, and I was that applicant, I'd be concerned that I spent all this money doing things.
Not to mention that they, they could be saying, "We stalled their project." They've put a lot of money into it, and so has the other one. Both are, both of them. The one up on Kendall Street, there's been a lot of money invested, and it wasn't, it, it's, it's like, um, I don't know. That's, I, I've said my piece on it, so.
I agree. I, I don't think it's fair.
But that's what I'm wondering.
They could come forward with an A and R before the town meeting?
Yes.
And-
It's a loophole.
Subdivision A and R, right?
Correct.
Oh, subdivision meaning dividing the property.
Right. Or they have to already have a permit in hand, building permit in hand?
Correct.
Well, where did this go back that once it was advertised, a public hearing was advertised, that such as a Red Rock would be, would be required to fall under the moratorium rule?
Right, so they have to have the building permit or the special permit before the notice of the publication of the, uh, public hearing.
Okay.
Because the subdivision process allows them to submit right up to town meeting. So there are two separate provisions. One is before the publication of the notice, and the other is before town meeting.
So, okay, I understand. So Red Rock can still be permitted provided they do an A and R?
Yes. So the A and R gives you protection for changes in use, and a moratorium is a use change, right? You can't build that. It's temporary, but it's a use change. So an A and R would protect them.
Okay.
So they could, you know, just submit a plan of their existing, uh, lots, have the board sign it, and that would protect them.
And then the board could still, um, bring that to an end, right, and make a decision?
Well, that, that doesn't-
The project itself?
Yeah, that doesn't, that doesn't affect the project. The project is still under the, the jurisdiction of the planning board until it's, until it's voted on and either approved or disapproved.
Right.
The A and R is just protecting it because there's a loophole in the bylaws, the, the state bylaws, if you will, that allows them to sneak that in there. So now they're protected. "You can't touch me. I've already started the process."
So the planning board would have to act on the application that's before in spite of the moratorium.
Okay, so we're still business as usual?
If, you know, to be, if they submit these plans, an A and R plan or a preliminary plan.
And they don't have a, a permit?
And this is all, this is all if, if, if the town body votes yes for a moratorium. Because they could just vote, they could vote no too.
Right.
But in the meantime, we can't, I just wanted to clarify. In the meantime, before the May special town meeting, if we're done with everything with a project, and we just have to make our decision, and we can't issue, can we issue a decision, or can we?
As of now, um, you cannot issue a decision on Red Rock because they're subject to the moratorium.
Right.
Up until the time they submit a plan, a subdivision plan, to gain protection from the moratorium.
Okay. Okay.
And then as Glenn said, if the moratorium is defeated, it goes back down.
Yeah.
And I'm not suggesting we don't look at the bylaws. I, I just have a difficult problem of trying to do this and not and involve people that have already been before us.
Well, if they want to do an A and R, then if they don't want to do an A and R, then they're subject.
Right.
And we, we mentioned that to them.
It is a loophole, as you said, too. And, and again, it's, it's not up to this board whether or not a moratorium's going to be put in place. You know, it's up to the, the town folks to decide and vote on it, yes or no. But, you know, and I do struggle with that because, you know, people have spent a lot of money. Their, our, 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 our town people are, are, you know,
Well, that's my point. It's not just the businesses. It's the residents in this town.
Right.
Their residents too.
That's what I'm saying, too. So, I mean, that's, you know, and just like anything, when things come up for town votes, yeah, you want to, you want to rally your troops and whatever, whatever side you stand on.
So Glenn, what is your answer? Is the board, as a planning board member, is the board in favor of supporting the moratorium? Are you in favor of supporting the moratorium?
I don't know. I, I, I just, to my point, as a member of the planning board, I, 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 I struggle with it. I really do. Because I, again, I go back to thinking about the, the residents of Ramby that who are looking right now to, are in the, the pipeline, if you will, as far as having a, um, a solar farm on their property, and they've, they've, they've spent that money. So, um, and I, I guess at that point, I, I, I struggle with it. I really do. And I don't think it's, um, again, whether I, whether I'm, I'm for it or against it, um, to me, it doesn't really matter. My personal opinion is my personal opinion as a, as a member of the town.
But Jim was looking, do we go as a divided planning board?
I, I, I think we have a divided planning board. I mean, really, let's face it. So there will not be a recommendation, yea or nay, in front of the-
Well, is that required?
I don't know.
Well, here's-
Not necessarily.
It's not, it's not required.
Here's the story. I, I see two in favor and two opposed with one abstention. So that's two to two. That's not a recommendation to town meeting. So town meeting then has to wait 21 days before it can act without a recommendation from the planning board. It's exactly 21 days to town meeting from tonight. So I don't think town meeting would be able to vote because it's not more than 21 days between this hearing and the town meeting.
Well, let me ask you this. The only reason, from what I understand, that this sole moratorium is being presented is because the select board wanted it presented.
Right, but the planning board is the gatekeeper of the zoning bylaw.
Okay.
Right.
So, planning board-
So if the planning board's not behind it?
No, the planning board has 21 days to make a recommendation. Uh, if there's no recommendation from the planning board within 21 days, then town meeting can't vote. It has to wait at least 21 days before it can vote.
Wait, wait, why is a recommendation after it comes from the planning board? Whether or not the planning board agrees on it, doesn't agree on it?
It's 48, section 5 says, you know, you have to, planning board is charged with making a recommendation at town meeting. If you don't make the recommendation, town meeting has to wait at least 21 days. In other words, you can't kill a proposal simply by not making a recommendation. After 21 days, town meeting can go ahead and vote. But you have to give town meeting 21 days before it-
I, I'm losing you, because, I guess, because it sounds like you're saying, because we didn't make a recommendation, the town can't vote on it.
So it's two to two of time, which is not a recommendation for or against. Without a recommendation from the planning board, town meeting has to wait 21 days. And it's exactly 21 days to the 13th of May.
So, wha, wha, again, Bill, what are you, what are you saying, Bill? So it's fine? They don't need a recommendation, or yes, they do need a recommendation?
It means town meeting can't vote on the article.
You just said that it'd be within 21 days, but we are 21 days.
Yeah, so I guess that's the question, is it more than 21 days or at least 21 days? Let me see if I can get the answer to that question.
I didn't understand that this was part of the involvement in the, in the question that was asked regarding the, uh, if the, if the planning board supported or did not support this moratorium. I thought regardless, it was still going to go to the floor at town meeting.
Yes, it'll still go, no, without a recommendation, if it's within 21 days, without a recommendation from the planning board, town meeting can't vote on it.
Oops. So that means it would be polled, and it wouldn't be again?
It means it would have to be passed over.
That's not going to apply.
No, no, I, I agree a lot.
Yeah, but that's, that's why, that's exactly why I want clarification as far as the 21 days or not. And, and if that's the case, I have no problem, then I'll, I'll be in favor of a, a moratorium at this point.
So we need clarification.
But, right, I don't want to see this not go back to the town people for a vote. Wait, no, I want to make sure this goes to the town people for a vote. It came out the wrong way.
Jim, did you understand it like that? Because, you know, quite often there are issues-
It's going to town floor.
Warrants brought to town meeting that financially, that involve finances, and the finance committee will either support them or not support them, but they still go to the floor.
They're, they're not, they're not the, they're not the originator of the article.
Yeah, they're not the ones presenting it. That's just their opinion.
Right, that's, that's, that's the understanding that I was under.
I have the text of, of 48, and I think Rob is going to pull up-
Putting it up on the screen as we speak.
It's 48, section 5. Where'd you? Uh, go to the, uh, general court if you can. The list, please, Jim.
And the search, you can search there. Well, you could put in, in the search, you can put in forty, whatever.
Forty A, right.
Chapter 48.
Section, yeah, that's good.
Section-
Going down a bit, gives you the section by section. Eight, nine, nine, five, twelve, seven, five. I just-
No, okay, that one?
Yeah, go there. And then it's one, two, three, four, beginning, no vote.
Go to four?
Go down. That's two. Three, four.
Okay.
Okay, so it says, can you see that?
No, but you can read it if you can see it.
No vote.
No vote to adopt, oops.
Sorry.
Okay. No vote to adopt any such proposed ordinance or bylaw, or amendment that should be taken, or to report with recommendations by a planning board, has been submitted to the town meeting or city council, or 21 days after said hearing has elapsed without submission of such report.
This is no vote to adopt such proposed ordinance. But we voted, but we voted on to present this, though.
It's a recommendation. You have to make a recommendation. It's the vote to recommend or not recommend.
And then the report we did put in.
So, so you're saying something different, then? If, if, you're saying as a board, we need to take a vote whether or not we're recommending these, these changes?
Right. Or 21 days go by.
Do we do the changes individually, or?
Uh, no, no, it's just when the article comes up on town meeting, the moderator will ask-
Because nowhere, nowhere there it says a recommendation.
Does the planning board have a recommendation on this article? And you say yes or no. If you don't have a recommendation, town meeting cannot act within 21 days of, of, of the public hearing.
I don't think I've ever heard that done before on any of the articles.
No.
Yeah, it's not, it doesn't usually come up. So-
We're digging up special stuff.
Well, it's good to know this.
Thing of, of the law. So the second sentence reads, "After such notice, hearing and report, or after 21 days shall have elapsed, after such hearing without submission of such a report, may we adopt, reject, or amend." So that says that after 21 days, without a report from, without a report with recommendations from the planning board, town meeting can act. So since it's exactly 21 days-
Hang on, I don't-
Wait, oh, okay.
Where do you see the word "after 21 days"?
What's that?
Yeah, right there.
Oh, 21 days after said hearing.
After 21 days shall have elapsed.
So there's, there's 21 days elapsed after today's hearing?
Well, that's-
That's, right, right.
That's exactly 21 days.
But like, like I said, you know, I-
Well, we can, we can end all this conversation just simply by, I think that we have two that have already stated they're against it, but I didn't under, unfortunately didn't understand this.
No, and that's why I said, to me, uh, it would be for bringing the, uh, moratorium forward to town to vote on it. I want them to have the obligation to vote on it, so, I mean, that, that's it.
So should we take this package that we just went over, the whole package, and, and vote on it?
So, because, because I, it's kind of stated, it's not whether or not I agree with a moratorium, it's whether or not I'm in favor of presenting it to the town.
Voting on the voting for each one of them.
For each one of them.
Well, I think town meeting wants to know what the planning board thinks of the article.
But these, these were-
So the planning board wants-
But what does it say that, though?
Well, because if the process is set up for the planning board to evaluate proposed zoning amendments and tell town meeting what it thinks. So that's the point of the recommendation.
Well, us bringing this forward to the town is a recommendation to the town. Now, we've taken all this, on, on every single bylaw we looked at.
Well, no, you could have a, a negative recommendation, but it still goes to town meeting anyway.
Well, that's right, right. This, but we're still-
You have to have a recommendation, whether it's for or against. That's what he's saying.
And we already voted on this stuff at a previous meeting, including the moratorium.
And including all of the reports.
But can I, yeah, now you're making a recommendation on the articles, not just whether they should go to town meeting or not. You, you have to tell town meeting whether you support it or you don't. Not just that you're submitting it for their action.
Well, it sounds to me like the board, by a, uh, simple majority, has approved-
So if someone-
-to move forward.
You have two to two right now. If someone were to change the vote, make it three, one, then it, it could go to town meeting for action.
Make it three, one?
It's, it's three, two.
No, and I, I, I-
Yeah, three, two now.
Right, and I just said earlier that I would, to, to vote on it, I'd vote to go forward the moratorium.
Okay.
So it brings it to town for a vote.
Somebody said that's the only right thing to do.
So then it's a three to two in favor of the article?
Yeah. This is all very interesting.
Yeah. So we need a-
No, it is. Because I, I don't, I don't, I guess, when I, when I read that, I don't see it as far as a recommendation.
It says after 21 days, so that's more than 21 days.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that.
21 days to town meeting.
But they should, it should be in the law somewhere. It should say the word recommendation or something, because it just, to me, it says, you know, the prior to adoption of, uh-
So that's chapter 48, section?
Five.
Five. I did have that right. So we need a motion now? To accept the, um- To accept the zoning bylaw changes, or zoning bylaw changes and recommend, blah.
Yeah.
One isn't a change.
You have, you have made a couple of suggestions to the business estate lots.
Mm-hmm.
So, the board should vote to accept those changes.
The specific individually, or...
For each, for the, you have the residential estates and the business estates.
Yeah, should we vote on each one individually?
You don't have to vote on...
So, anything we changed, so that would also be the first one, industrial?
Right.
Well, it doesn't have to go to town meeting for a vote.
But we're, what we're voting on is, okay, we're taking these changes, and the final documents, we give them for the special town meeting, we'll have these changes incorporated. We don't have to bring up the changes at the special town meeting.
Right.
Does that make sense? Everybody got that? So, our first motion, taking them, is to, what's the fancy word for this? We're not doing section two. We're not changing the... Okay, motion made...
I'll make a propose, a motion to remove the proposed changes to section two zoning district, section 2.0 types of districts, and delete changing industrial to district...
Right, now, remove the proposed change.
Correct.
To section two zoning districts, section 2.0 type of districts, oops. Type of districts, zone I two, right?
Correct.
So, it reads, motion made by Jim to remove, remove proposed changes to section two zoning districts, section 2.0 type of districts, zone I two. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion?
Okay. Now, the next motion would be the, these two here. The single-family estate.
I would just go in order here on this.
Oh, you want to go one by one, by one down here? Okay. Okay.
Next one is section two.
So, motion was made by, let's see, it would be to accept the changes noted in...
Yes, to section 3.0, 3.1.
To accept changes made in section three, use regulations, section 3.0 schedule of regulations, section 3.1 prohibited uses and table one schedule of use regulations. Seconded by, okay. So, what if I make the motion? That'll make it a lot easier.
Sure.
Nobody has to remember. Okay, I make a motion to accept changes made in section two use regulations, section 3.0 schedule of regulations, section 3.1 prohibited uses, and table one schedule of use regulations.
Second.
Okay.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next one. I'll make this one, too. Makes it easier. To accept... Now, this is the one, the single-family dwelling, this is the one where we had an amendment, so we're just going to accept all changes, right?
Yes.
One fell swoop.
Accept the changes that, that you submitted.
Changes made in bylaw, 5.4, single-family dwelling on estate, yes, lots subsections 5.40 and 5.41. 5.41. So, my motion is to accept changes made in bylaw 5.4, single-family dwelling on estate lots, subsection 5.4 and 5.41.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Rolling along here. Okay, to accept... Okay. Do I want to say, accept the new bylaw 5.13 and its changes? Because we made changes after that. Okay. To accept new bylaw 5.13 business estate lots and its changes. Okay, the motion is to accept new bylaw 5.13 business estate lots and its changes.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So, this one we've got to do, too, the table, adding the table. Motion is made, famous, to accept change made to section three use regulations, table one schedule of use regulations, R-A-G-U-L-A-D-I-O-N, ends with regard to business estate lots. Want me to read that again?
Yes, please.
Okay. Make a motion to accept, accept the cha, changes, changes made to section two use regulations, table one schedule of use regulations with regard to business estate lots.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion. Okay, motion to add, we're not changing anything here, we're adding. Yeah.
Is it, is it really a bylaw, or is it just a moratorium?
No, it's a bylaw.
It's a zoning bylaw.
So, to add bylaw section 5.99.13 large-scale ground-mounted solar energy systems moratorium.
Second.
Perhaps, but it doesn't specify for the, for the expression.
Doesn't specify what? What was that, Jim?
Were we going to reference that for the length of, length of time the moratorium is at in there?
September 3, 2019.
Yeah, that's in there.
You can change, you can change that date if you want. I think six months is a more reasonable period of time.
Three months, maybe?
You're going to have to meet an awful...
Okay.
You're okay with it the way it is?
Yep.
Okay, so my motion is to accept changes made, whoop, to add bylaw section 5.99.13 large-scale ground-mounted solar energy systems moratorium, and Bob has seconded.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed, yes.
Is that a three, two, or a four, one?
Are you, oh. The sole moratorium?
I, I opposed it.
Okay. So, you're an aye, or you're a...
See, this is where I get into a quandary, because at the previous meeting where we talked about all this stuff and we voted to present this package tonight, a vote was taken, and I hesitated on a yea or a nay, and said, well, we should go into this as a board that is together.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm still wrestling with that. I did say aye, just so the public knows.
Uh, just now for this one?
Just now. But previously, I had, in this discussion, had said no. I was against it.
So, Jim?
I'm not going to abstain, I'm going to have a vote.
Okay. One no. Jim, you're a no? Okay.
My, my, my no vote doesn't say I don't think it should go to...
Town meeting.
I don't think it should go to town meeting.
Okay. That's what I was thinking that my no, no vote would say.
And I don't, I don't, it's going to go to town meeting, but I don't support it.
Right.
I, I've, I've got conflicts with it.
It, it can go, it, as Bob referenced before, it can go to town meeting with a recommendation that the board's in favor, in favor of it, or the board's against it. It's a recommendation, it can be positive or negative.
Well, I can just say it's not a split board. Well, we don't have to say anything at all at town meeting.
I think we'd give the vote. If the vote, if the vote's a three to two, then the board's in favor of it.
And that's what I would like to be, is a three to two.
So, do you want me to change your vote?
I would like that. I would like to...
Let's take the vote over again so we're clear.
Okay. So, we can read it again, please, Lily?
Okay. Motion was made by me to add bylaw section 5.99.13 large-scale ground-mounted solar energy systems moratorium. Bob, you seconded it.
I'll second.
Okay. Discussion?
Is there any discussion? No. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay. Just, just a, a, a four cents here, and Bob, you seconded it to add it, but then you're saying no.
Yeah, you can do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. On to the next one. And that will be the last one for the, um, well, no, we have to do the last two.
There's one more for the zoning?
Right. But then, then we have to vote on the last two, even though it's not going?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so this one. Motion, if I have my fingers on the proper keys. To accept changes made to bylaw 6.2 special permits, section 6.21 special permit granting authorities. Want me to read that again? Sure, why not? I made a motion to accept changes made to bylaw 6.2 special permits, section 6.21 special permit granting authorities.
Second.
I'm sorry, I was writing down something. Second, Bob?
Yes.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now, um, motion by me to accept changes in bylaw 7.01 roadway design subsection eight sidewalks.
These are subdivision regulations, not bylaws.
Oh, okay.
We can still vote on, right, to...
Rules and regulations.
That, what you wrote, you're going with that.
Okay, so I'm making a motion to accept changes in subdivision rules and regulations, 7.01 roadway design subsection eight sidewalks.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Last one. Made by me to accept changes in the fee schedule. Uh, well, rules and, rules and regula, and I have to do that, sub, because it's in subdivisions.
Is it a subdivision, or is it just a separate fee regulation?
It's attached to the end.
Okay, so it's subdivision, sorry. Well, actually, well, because there are other zoning improvements here as well.
It's not all subdivision.
So, I think it's a separate fee regulation that you have.
Okay, so accept changes in the fee schedule?
Yes.
Period, full stop.
That's a blanket everything.
Second.
Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Woo! The end.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Everybody opposed?